All right, it is seven oh five and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held virtually in an effort to keep the public council and staff safe in these sub-zero temperatures. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all. Nailed it. Good job, everybody. All right, Ms. folks, please call the roll.
Hayden Chompsey?
Here.
Loudon?
Here.
Riard?
Here.
Crane? Here with no audio. Schmidt?
Here.
Carpenter Davis?
Here.
Josie?
Here.
All right. First, we do have a revised agenda this evening, removing consideration of the master CIP, item seven B tonight, and deferring that until a future meeting. Ms. Smith, could you please share some additional information on the requested revision?
Uh, yes, thank you. I think, uh, at the committee meeting when we presented it, we said this was kind of step one in our path forward to consider the debt issuance for the Johnson Drive project and the, um, Rock Creek Stormwater Channel project. Uh, the Johnson Drive project, along with many of our others, were still trying to get written confirmation that the funding is in place and, uh, ready to go. So we talked with our financial advisor, uh, and felt like we would not be really missing any steps if we just defer this a month, uh, and then kind of bring all that back, uh, together or so. So that's, um, that is sort of what we're looking at at this point.
Okay, thank you. I would now entertain a motion. On the revised agenda.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the revised agenda as printed.
Second.
Mayor, in a second, Robin, please call roll.
Josie?
Aye.
Crane?
That's a thumbs up and an eye from Debbie.
All right. Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eden Chompsey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we do have two public hearings this evening. The first is related to the tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for fifty-six sixty-five Fox Ridge, which was continued from the January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. The council will be taking no formal action on this project this evening, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, it will be continued to the March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting. Presentations from the developer and staff will be made at that time. I now officially, I will now officially open the public hearing. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on the tax increment financing redevelopment project plan, please add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will now formally continue the public hearing on the fifty-six sixty-five Fox Ridge Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan to the March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting at seven P M. for further discussion and action. The second public hearing this evening is related to the Mission Mark Community Improvement District application. Similar to the last previous public, the last public hearing, the council will be taking no formal action on this project tonight, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, it will be continued to the March nineteenth city council meeting. Presentations from the developer and staff will be made at that time. I will now officially open the public hearing. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on the Mission Mark Community Improvement District application, please add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, I will now formally continue our here, public hearing on the Mission Mark Community Improvement District application to the March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting at seven P M. for further discussion and action. We were going to have one special presentation tonight on our twenty-twenty-five championship tree, but given the inclement weather and the desire to do that in person, we will be holding that over to our next council meeting as well. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds this evening, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has two items tonight. Our council committees met on February fifth and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items four A through four B.
Second.
Second. We, we have a motion in a second, Robin, please call the roll.
Eden Chompsey?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Crane? A thumbs up. It's a.
All right.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next is public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on items not included on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. Please add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comments verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any comments on an item not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move into items from our planning commission. We do have one item coming forward from the planning commission for consideration of a lot split at sixty-twenty-nine outlook. Mr. Scott, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this pertains to a lot split of sixty-twenty-nine outlook. And, um, the original lot was actually planted in nineteen twenty-five as part of the Mission Hill Acres subdivision. And the house that was built in that parcel property was built nineteen thirty-five and was approximately seven hundred forty-four square feet. Uh, the house was recently purchased and demolished, and the applicant has requested that we split the lot so that he can build two new homes on the lot, one in each new lot. Um, the zoning code requires that any lot may be split to a minimum width of sixty feet and depth of one hundred and ten feet if compliments the overall character of the adjacent neighborhood. Considering applications for a lot split to be with a less than seventy feet, the lot width of any newly created lot may not be less than seventy-five percent of the average front lot width of lots within the subject property's block. That's actually a mouthful. But, um, we traditionally look at a block, we look at those parcels of property that are within the, um, actual block itself. So that would be the area bounded by Outlook on the west, Reeves on the east, Martway on the north, and sixty-first street on the south. And when we look at those lots within that area, we find that the, um, doesn't quite match that formula. Some of the lots within the block are bigger, so that formula wouldn't work. But if we redefine the definition of a block and we look at just Outlook between sixty-first and Martway, so kind of I live in the block of Outlook, the sixty-six-hundred block of Outlook, and this six-thousand block of Outlook. And we look at those properties on either side of Outlook, at the east side and the west side, that formula would work. So, um, this was all explained to the planning commission, and the planning commission accepted that definition of a block as being on either side of Outlook between sixty-first street and Martway. And they recommended approval, eight to zero, uh, for the city council to approve the lot split. And I believe the applicant may be on the line as well, if we have any questions for him. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Brian. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for council discussion. Do we have any council discussion on this issue? Seeing none, we, um, I would entertain a motion on the lot split at sixty-twenty-nine outlook.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the, uh, lot split at sixty-twenty-nine outlook.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Thank you. Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eden Chompsey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Schmidt, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, I will, thank you. Uh, the Finance and Administration Committee met on February fifth and considered three items. The meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. Uh, reclassification requests for the city of Mission will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Uh, so that is item seven A, the reclassification requests. Periodically, positions throughout the organization are reviewed to ensure position descriptions and salary grades are aligned appropriately with the actual work being performed. This review can be completed at any time during the year, but is generally reserved once multiple requests have been received. A one-off reclassification could occur if necessary, but this approach allows for a more comprehensive look and consideration of all relevant factors and potential impacts to other positions prior to making any changes. The last request for reclassifications occurred on January twenty-twenty-three and included several department reorganization recommendations as well. The positions to be reviewed include city clerk, city planner, mechanic, park maintenance supervisor, membership coordinator, and special projects coordinator. Uh, Mayor, I move the city council approve the recommended, recommended position reclass, reclassifications effective March first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
You have a motion in a second, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll.
Riard?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Josie?
Aye.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And since item seven B, considering a master CIP resolution was removed from the agenda earlier this evening, that concludes my report.
Okay, great. Councilmember Reher, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on February fifth and considered seven items. The meeting minutes and Superpole Pass Agreement Letter of Understanding were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. The twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction projects contract award inspection services task order for the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction projects, twenty-twenty-five cars project contract award inspection services for twenty-twenty-five cars project, and interlocal for twenty-twenty-five street reconstruction project stormwater reimbursement will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Seven C is the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction projects contract award. The twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction project includes the streets listed below. These locations, which include sixty-first street Broadmoor to Barclay, sixty-second street Glenwood to Lamar, Reeves Road Johnson Drive to Fifty-Eighth Street, and Beverly Drive Dearborn to Reeves have been selected for, from the proposed ten-year program for the local residential streets based on pavement condition. The average PCI of these segments is twenty-three, which is considered very poor. The scope of work for the projects include full-depth pavement reconstruction, curb and gutter removal and replacement, existing sidewalk replacement, and stormwater improvements or repairs. The twenty-twenty-five residential street preservation project was bid in December twenty-twenty-four, and bids were open on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. There were three bidders with GB Construction LLC submitting the lowest and most responsive bid. The residential street reconstruction program was built with a goal of allocating two million dollars annually for design, construction, and construction inspection. Based on the engineer's estimate for the twenty-twenty-five program, it was bid with sixty-first street, sixty-second street, and Beverly Drive including as a base bid, and Reeves Road including as a bid alternative, alternate. Staff anticipates receiving approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the county's stormwater management program as reimbursement for stormwater repairs and placements associated with this project. There are no stormwater reimbursements associated with the repair of Reeves Road. Staff is recommending approval of a contract with GB Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed two million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents to include all four streets. These are sufficient resource, there are sufficient resources in the capital improvement and street sales tax funds to proceed, and deferring maintenance would only put us behind in our progress. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with GB Construction LLC for construction of the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction projects in an amount not to exceed two million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Right, we have a motion in a second, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any council discussion?
I'm just happy to see that we're continuing on with our, uh, street, uh, work projects, and, uh, I think the, the community enjoys having well-paved streets.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, no further comment, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have seven D inspection services tax, task order for twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction. Construction inspection services are necessary for the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction projects in order to achieve quality construction in accordance with the city's plans and specifications. Peppercorn was, Peppercorn was recently selected as one of, one of the city's on-call inspection firms and has previously provided cost-effective quality construction inspection services for our, for the Lamar Avenue rehabilitation and resurfacing project in twenty-twenty, and the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four residential street reconstruction projects. Staff recommends approval of a construction inspection services task order under the master agreement with Peppercorn approved in January twenty-twenty-five for inspection services for the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction projects in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. All documentation, observation, and required testing are included as part of this contract. Mayor, I move the city council approve a construction inspection services task order with Peppercorn Engineering and Environmental LLC for construction inspection services for the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction projects in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, seven E, the twenty-twenty-five cars project contract award. On April third, twenty-twenty-four, the city council approved a resolution adopting the five-year cars street improvement program for the twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-nine, which included sixty-third street reconstruction project, Knoll Avenue to Row Avenue in twenty-twenty-five. A design contract for the project was also authorized at the same meeting. This is a joint project with Prairie Village with Mission administering the project. The proposed improvements will include mill and overlay with full-depth pavement repairs replacement, spot replacement of curb and gutter, sidewalks and ADA ramps, stormwater repairs, and pavement markings. The project was bid in December twenty-twenty-four, and the bids were open on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. There were five bidders with GB Construction LLC submitting the lowest and most responsive bid. Construction is anticipated to begin in March twenty-twenty-five and in, is estimated to be completed within one hundred and eighty days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with GB Construction LLC for construction of the twenty-twenty-five cars rehabilitation project sixty-third street from Knoll Avenue to Row Avenue in an amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-five cents.
There you go.
Motion in a second, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any council comments? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie?
Aye.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have seven F inspection services for the twenty-twenty-five cars project. Construction inspection services are necessary for the twenty-twenty-five cars project in order to achieve quality construction in accordance with the city's plans and specifications. Peppercorn was recently suspect, selected as one of the city's on-call inspection firms and has previously provided cost-effective quality construction inspection services from the Lamar Avenue rehabilitation and resurfacing project in twenty-twenty, and the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four residential street reconstruction projects. Staff recommends approval of a construction inspection services agreement for the twenty-twenty-five cars rehabilitation project sixty-third street from Knoll Avenue to Row Avenue with Peppercorn in amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars. All documentation, observation, and required testing are included as part of this contract. The contract is based on full-time services, and the city will only be billed for actual time spent on the project. Construction is anticipated to begin in March twenty-twenty-five, and it, and is estimated to be completed within a hundred and eighty days. Mayor, I move the city council approve a construction inspection services agreement with Peppercorn Engineering and Environmental LLC for construction inspection services for the twenty-twenty-five cars rehabilitation project sixty-third street from Knoll Avenue to Row Avenue in an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll.
Loudon?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Riard?
Aye.
Eden Chompsey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have the seven G interlocal for twenty-twenty-five street reconstruction project stormwater reimbursement. Johnson County provides funding assistance for replacing aging stormwater infrastructure, infrastructure with a condition rating above three point two. This program offers a fifty-fifty cost share between the county and participating cities for replacing existing infrastructure. However, cities are responsible for costs associated with system upgrades, such as increasing capacity or adding new infrastructure. In twenty-twenty-four, staff submitted an application to Johnson County to replace all eligible stormwater assets within the twenty-twenty-five street rehabilit, real, street rehabilitation project and other capital projects. The county issued the interlocal agreement in late twenty-twenty-four, and it is now ready for council consideration. The agreement outlines county policies and procedures, details the stormwater system renewal projects, and commits funding contributions. The county will cover up to fifty thousand, fifty percent of the stormwater cost estimated at one million six hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. Following the bid opening, staff is estimating a total stormwater costs for the, for the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction program will be less than the original estimates, resulting in a reimbursement of approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city's share has already been allocated through a transfer from the Stormwater Utility Fund to the street program budget. Approval of this agreement enables staff to request reimbursement for eligible stormwater infrastructure costs associated with the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction program as its, as expenses are incurred. Mayor, I move the city council approve an interlocal agreement with Johnson County for the twenty-twenty-five stormwater system renewal project known as the twenty-twenty-five Mission Street Repairs one dash MI dash twenty-twenty-five dash R dash five eight three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any council's discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Loudon?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Eden Chompsey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that finally concludes my report.
All right, thank you, long one. Uh, we do not have any unfinished business tonight, therefore we will move into our new business. We do have one item of new business tonight for consideration of emergency repairs at Johnson Drive and Dearborn from Stephanie Boyce.
Good evening. Hope everybody can hear me? All right, um, so, uh, in January of twenty-twenty-five, a subcontractor for AT&amp;T struck a water main while they were conducting their underground bore for fiber optic installation, um, at the intersection of Johnson Drive and Dearborn Street. I know a lot of you guys were probably aware and out there and saw that. Um, Water One successfully repaired their damaged water main, and AT&amp;T subcontractor resumed their work, um, continuing with that fiber optic. Fiber optic, um, bores on January thirty-first, and during this time, they also caused damage to Kansas Gas Facilities and city, um, streetlight infrastructure. The subcontractor is not equipped to perform the necessary repairs to our infrastructure, which includes stormwater, curb, sidewalks, ADA ramps, pavement restoration, resulting in an insurance claim with AT&amp;T subcontractor. Um, so we did file a claim against the insurance company to recuperate the costs incurred. Um, we reached out to GB Construction, estimate of the emergency repairs to our damaged infrastructure, including again the stormwater, the curves, the sidewalks, ADA ramps, pavement restoration, which will occur once the weather, um, condition allowing for appropriate paving operations. Um, we selected GB Construction because they're local, they will be mobilized in our city, um, in the two contracts that you just approved, the twenty-twenty-five street reconstruction and the cars project. They've done some emergency repairs for us in the past, uh, including the Rock Creek Channel and on, uh, and repairs on Outlook. Um, they provided a cost estimate, which is attached, and again, which will be reimbursable through the insurance claim. So we're, um, seeking authorization to move forward with this so that we can get those storm drains, curbs, gutters, sidewalk repaired, and then the pavement restoration, um, once the weather warms up here. Shortly. Any questions?
Questions for Stephanie? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the council approve a contract with GB Construction LLC for emergency repairs at Johnson Drive and Dearborn Street in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand two hundred and one dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Eden Chompsey?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Riard?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Crane?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and before we move into our council member comments, I wanted to say a special thank you to Stephanie for joining us on her birthday tonight, and happy birthday, Stephanie.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And then also tonight, congratulations to Justin for one year with Mission. One year anniversary today, so big, big day over here. Woo-hoo. All right, we'll, yeah. We will move on to our comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone in the council have something they'd like to share tonight?
I do.
Yep.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I know some of you and some of those who might be watching or reading the minutes here on this meeting, um, are aware of the open house we had on Monday evening for the Johnson Drive Reconstruction Project, um, to, to happen next year, tentatively depending on the funding situation. um, to, to happen next year, tentatively depending on the funding situation. Um, and I, I think maybe there are some folks I've spoken with, uh, that, that are hoping to hear a little bit more about that, um, maybe at this meeting, but I do want to share that I, I've sent some concerns to the city staff, and I'm planning to discuss those further. Um, but we'll all need a little bit more time to, I think, really dig into that and, and come up with a meaningful response that, uh, really wouldn't fit here in council comments tonight. So just in case anybody's looking for that, um, keep your eyes and ears open, and, uh, I think we'll, we'll have more to say on that in the future here.
Right, any other council comments tonight? Yeah, Cheryl?
Um, what I would just say is thank you to our Public Works Department. I know this has been a horrendous season, but you guys have done a really good job, and, and I'm seeing people pass three and four times in our neighborhood and adding salt, and you guys have done a great job, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll pass it on to our crew. They'll appreciate that.
And it's fun seeing all the snowplow names out and about as you see the plows go by.
I just, I also wanted to give a shout out to Robin. I've been just like following along all the social media posts, and you're so calm and collected and kind in all of the comments, so thank you for updating everybody and keeping everybody, um, you know, apprised of what's kind of going on, and you're doing an excellent job, so.
Thank you, I very much appreciate that.
Absolutely, if you drive, you know, throughout the city, you can really tell that, uh, you know, where different cities begin and end in terms of how easy it is to pass through the roads, and Mission always does a great job of getting our roads cleaned up and ready to go.
Yep.
All right, any more council comments? Saying none, we'll move into our council committee liaison reports. These allow the whole governing body to stay up to date with our various activities of our boards, commissions, and committees. So first we'll have council members Loudon, Hayden, and Champosi for the Sustainability Commission.
Yeah, so, um, the Sustainability Commission met on February third, uh, and they had a couple of guests from the, uh, Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec area. Uh, uh, that, that particular commission. Um, they are still in the process of kind of making some plans. They, their planning cycle runs in a, in a two-year round, it sounds like, but coming up on April fifth, they are participating in the Climate Action Summit. Um, they have, of course, already started planning for a number of events around uh, recycling and green, uh, green, uh, processes in cities. Uh, for Earth Week, which is coming up in the next few months, there will be a competition who can, uh, be the most sustainable person for a week, and so keep an eye out for that. They invite you all, all of us, to participate in that, as well as to participate in citywide cleanup events, um, that happen across the course of the year. There are a couple of additional, um, volunteer opportunities, it sounds like, coming available, uh, depending on a few pieces of information that they can get, uh, around those events, and so information pending on that as well. Um, and, um, I guess, finally, finally, uh, they, uh, are going to have, uh, a presentation, uh, coming up soon. They're thinking March or April, but most likely April, to come and talk to us about the primary pillars of the work that they are hoping to do, which center around people, planet, and prosperity. That is my update.
Great. Then we have council members Kring and Schmidt for Parks and Recreation. I note first that Debbie made a comment in the chat that the focus of the meeting was on the budget and associated roles of Parks and Recreation members. Brian, do you have anything additional to add to that?
I admittedly did not expect Debbie to take on that report with, uh, unheard of, to be heard, so, uh, no, that's, uh, that's absolutely what I was gonna say. A lot of the time, um, spent on budget, that will probably be the case for the next few meetings. Um, the only other thing I'll call out is, uh, there was a focus on, um, adding some subcommittees um, to better handle specific areas around, uh, parks, trees, and, uh, gardening, which I think is a fantastic way to let people get more micro-involved in the specific areas that, um, you know, they really feel passionate about. So I think that's a, a great step forward for the, for the group.
Great. Next, we have council member Josie for the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, the previous meeting, we, uh, had a good discussion. We felt pretty upbeat about the, the recent issue. Um, the consensus was this was a, a really good issue of the magazine. That was a, uh, especially good representation of Mission and, um, and figures around the community. Um, we have, uh, we've, uh, we've heard for, we've heard about some changes, um, with the publisher or editorial staff, and, um, believe that they're gonna improve writing and editorial content. Um, so we're looking forward to some impacts on the April issue there. Um, the upcoming issue is themed around community building. Will be, it'll be the end of April. Um, so we're looking at places like Tyler's House, Mission Barbell, Prairie Sailor, uh, who do group bicycle rides, um, Rock Creek Brewing, who contribute to our family adoption committee, um, several, many more things, actually. Uh, and then looking at some departures from the editorial board, the magazine editorial board here in the city. Um, if anybody has any suggestions for candidates for the board, we'd love to hear those. Um, and also, we've just reclassified the special projects coordinator position this evening. So that's now, um, a benefits-eligible position, which does contribute to, uh, writing and content for the magazine. So spread the word on that position as well, which is posted on the website. And that concludes my report.
Great, and finally, we have council member Carpenter Davis with Family Adoption Committee.
The, uh, Family Adoption Committee hasn't met this month, but we are continuing to look forward to next year and, and some tweaking and from what we learned this year, and some input from our social workers, and we have one on the committee at this point in time, so that's really helpful. But hope to keep you posted soon. Thanks.
Great, uh, next we'll move into our city administrators' report. Laura, do you have any items for council tonight?
Uh, Robin, do you have any new businesses to report?
I have one. Um, let's see, most of you have probably read about this in the Johnson County Post, but Jerusalem Cafe will be opening their first Johnson County location in Mission at sixty-twenty-nine Metcalf, um, previous, um, we had a Mexican spot there. Um, so when I spoke with the owner earlier this week, they're hoping to open the first or second week of March. They're working on some inspections, um, fire inspections and things, but they're very excited. And then, uh, mark your calendars. If you're a, mark your calendar ahead-of-time person like I am for our third annual citywide cleanup. Uh, it'll be Saturday, April twenty-sixth, with a kickoff breakfast at Beverly Park, and more information and signups will be coming out at the beginning of March.
Nice. Robin, any updates on when, uh, the Vietnamese restaurant on Johnson Drive is gonna open? I've seen activity there, but I haven't seen an opening date.
I know, they were so close, so I actually asked about that, um, to our community development staff earlier this week. Uh, they hadn't had anything to indicate an actual opening. I think they had gone through some inspections, so it's closed. There's a menu on the window and like signage, and today I thought it would be a perfect spot for a really cold day.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Justin, do you wanna touch on the fin, interim financials, and then I'll just have a couple of items to wrap up?
Yeah, so there's, uh, there were two reports included this month. So the first was the December, and then there's the January, and the December essentially acts as the year-end report, and so, uh, the two primary things I'll point out with that is the, the good news and then the not-as-good news. Um, the second page of that is uh, the, the general fund revenues. So, and I kinda touched on this a few times throughout the year last year, but, you know, we've been experiencing really strong year-over-year growth, particularly in sales tax, and that had really started to slow down, and you can see that in the final numbers for two thousand twenty-four, so we didn't quite hit the estimated numbers. Uh, year-over-year is, is, we're tracking fine, um, but just kinda noting that, that, that primarily sales tax-driven did slow down. Um, in particular, there's been some really wonky things happening with use tax, which is, you know, the tax collected for online sales. So I'll get into that a little bit, cause that shows up more in the January report, but just some of that going on. Uh, the good news portion of that is on the fourth page of the report, which is the giant page, uh, of expenditures, and just noting that we did come in under budget in two thousand twenty-four, uh, by about five hundred thousand dollars from what we were budgeting for and what we actually expended. So, um, that's the good news, uh, regarding two thousand twenty-four. And then I'll just touch briefly, cause there's not a lot of data on, obviously, cause it's just January, but regarding the use tax, uh, we just found out and didn't get a forewarning or anything again from the state of Kansas. We had to pay out a giant refund um, on a bunch of purchases that were made that, and ultimately were, um, tax-free because the entity was a utility, and so this kind of is a compounding issue, um, that those purchases used to be included in our normal receipts, and so they were built into projections. So when we missed it on the front end, because that purchase, they, they finally have corrected this. And so that purchase is getting tax-exempt, but they still had one refund to come out. So if, just trying to take a step to, basically, we didn't know that, and so it was built in not only to our assumptions, and it hit us again when we had to send the refund out. So, long story short, we have talked to the state, and that is supposed to be rectified with them, and they know that moving forward, so we should be good on that front, but that impacted us both last year and then to start off this year. So, um, with that, I'd, uh, be happy to answer any questions on the financial reports.
Questions for Justin on that? Saying none, Laura, did you have anything else to add?
Um, just a couple of things. We have just about wrapped up the year-end, two thousand twenty-four year-end report. So our hope is to get that delivered to you all next week. Um, just that, you'll recall that gives you kind of an overview of our successes, accomplishments, where we are on projects, a lot of data on building permits, code enforcement, just all the kind of activities, police statistics, all of those things. So we'll look forward to sharing that with you. Um, and then just a reminder that we will have a work session next, um, next Wednesday, uh, at six P M, and, um, we'll look forward to kind of, uh, launching into a discussion of police compensation, uh, and, um, uh, camping and on public property ordinance, and, uh, hopefully some of the questions that council member Josie, uh, identified this evening with respect to the Johnson Drive project. The only other thing is that we are slowly but surely trying to work our way through confirming, uh, our federal loans and grants. Uh, we've had a couple of, um, successes this week. Uh, Stephanie was able to confirm that our Safe Streets for All funds are intact and in place, and so, um, I know you will be interviewing potential consultants to conduct that study Friday this week, correct? Um, and
Yes.
Uh, so we'll be able, we, with that confirmation, we'll be able to move into an actual contract award, which will be fantastic. And then Brian, uh, was able to confirm the, uh, Planning Sustainable Places, uh, grant that we have for the Rock Creek Corridor West Study. Um, I had a very productive call, um, this week on our community project funding grant that I'll look forward to, um, updating everybody on when I take the next few steps, but the most, uh, most productive call, um, we've had since that those funds were awarded to us, so that was, uh, great. Um, so we are just working our way through the list. Uh, obviously, we didn't get a definitive answer uh, at Stephanie's, uh, S T P committee meeting through Mark on the Johnson Drive project. So that again is our primary focus, and trying to make sure we have an understanding, uh, of that. And I think that is all I have this evening.
Great, and related to that, I am on the N L C Transportation Committee, and they did have a couple leads on contacts too, on chasing those federal dollars. I'm working with Laura on, on that as well. All right, so we do not have a need for an executive session this evening, so before we adjourn tonight, I just wanna share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Mayor, did you see Debbie's question in the chat? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, no, no.
Any update? Okay.
Yeah, so Debbie asked, do we have any updates on a one Ward one council member? Unfortunately, we had one person express interest, but then, uh, due to some conflicts withdrew their name from interest. And so we are back to square one on our Ward one council member hunt, so please, please ask around if you know anyone who might be interested in being Joseph's Ward one buddy. But that's all, that's all I got on that one. All right, so I think we had our motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.